All right. Good evening, citizens and city council. I'll call the September fifth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the West Richardson City Council to order at six P M. And before we call the roll, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid meeting ground rules, if you would please, Stephanie?
All right, thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit comments to three minutes. Okay, roll call. Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Present.
John Smart?
Here.
And council member Stoker notified me that he would be out of town for tonight's meeting.
May I have motion to excuse council member Stoker from this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. Uh, Mr. Bloom, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Bloom, appreciate it. Counsel, the agenda is before you this evening. Are there any changes to your agenda? Seeing done, I have motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, council. And tonight, our finance director, Aaron Glenn, is going to present the second quarter financial report. With that, Aaron, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Gary. Good evening, council. Good evening, citizens. Uh, this evening, I'm presenting the twenty twenty-three second quarter financial report. Uh, we'll start with an overview and economic update. Uh, this will be followed by specific financial information regarding the general fund, followed by the other funds. For the first overview of the economy slide, we'll start with unemployment, uh, which has decreased to three point three percent in Benton County. This is down from five point six percent in my first quarter report. Another economic indicator we've talked about for over a year and will continue to monitor is inflation. Uh, one of the measures used is a consumer price index, which nationally has a twelve month percentage increase of three percent when comparing June of twenty twenty-two to June of twenty twenty-three. The Seattle metro is higher at four point six percent when comparing that same time period. Uh, both of these are trending in the correct direction. Uh, June of twenty twenty-two, the nation saw its largest C P I index increase of nine point one percent. And it has continued trending downward since. So good news on that front. Uh, locally, we look out cities building activity. Uh, single family permits issued were thirty-six for the second quarter in twenty twenty-three compared to seventy-two the same period in twenty twenty-two. Uh, multi-family through second quarter was twenty-two with eighty-eight units um, for this year and eleven for the previous year. Um, however, three of those were canceled later, so it was really only eight, which was thirty-two units. So we are seeing an increase in a multi-family uh, decrease in the single family permits. Uh, the city received twenty-one percent less building permit revenue in the second quarter compared to the same time last year. Uh, this is another view of your new single family home permits. This shows uh years in comparison along with the green line that shows the increase in valuation. Uh, this is a great example of the volatility of this revenue source. Um, you can see we're trending back down to the twenty nineteen um, uh, numbers. Um, so next slide, a couple slides ago, I mentioned uh that we received twenty-one percent less building permit revenue compared to the previous year. Uh, this is a bit of a different look in this slide. This is comparing to what we budgeted. Um, the light blue area is budgeted revenue compared to the gray black line, which is the amount we've collected. So we're pretty far off from our budget at this point. Um, at the end of June, the city collected two hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars compared to our budgeted of four hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This will be a trend we monitor in coming months and may need to be adjusted for our mid-bio annual budget. Uh, these next eleven slides look at specific details regarding the general fund. Uh, this slide shows where the money is coming from in terms of budget. So this is uh, you can see the majority is from taxes, which are the sales tax, property tax, and utility taxes. Um, this is a view of the general fund revenues collected. The city collected twenty percent less revenue in twenty twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-two. A large part of this decrease has to do with the uh ARPA money, the um, uh, trying to remember that what the acronym stands for, going blank. Um, but this was transferred beginning second quarter of twenty twenty-two. We had three transfers, um, second, third, and fourth quarter of twenty twenty-two, so I'll be skewing our numbers for the next couple of quarters. Uh, sales tax revenue, building permit revenue, and charges for services, which is primarily the plan review fee associated with building permits, uh, saw decreases of thirteen percent, twenty-one percent, and eleven percent respectively. When reviewing trends, it's important to look at how we're doing compared to what was budgeted. Uh, in addition to the year-to-year changes, uh, this slide compares what was budgeted well versus what was collected for the second quarter in the year twenty-three. The general fund collected twenty-five percent of budgeted revenues. Um, we're looking for at least a quarter or twenty-five percent um for the biennium. So despite having decreases in sales tax and building permit revenues, we're right on target. Uh, this will be an area that's closely monitored as we continue through the biennium. These next three slides look at sales tax revenue in the general fund. As shown in previous slide, uh, sales tax uh, decreased thirteen percent compared to the prior second quarter. Uh, this is another view which compares the different business sectors. Uh, the retail sector decreased by eighteen percent uh and represents thirty-eight percent of the total sales tax collected by the city. Uh, construction also decreased by eighteen percent and represents twenty-four percent of sales tax collected. This third slide is showing uh the comparison to where we're budgeted. The city has collected nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and nine dollars as of June thirtieth. Our budget projection was one million, one hundred, one thousand, six hundred and seven dollars in the second quarter. So it's about seventeen percent or a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars less collected than what we were projecting. Another major revenue source in the general fund is from utility taxes. Overall, utility tax revenue increased nine percent compared to twenty twenty-two. There were increases in all categories, which include telephone, cable, gas, electric, water, sewer, stormwater, and solid waste. Uh, most of this increase can be contributed to weather, new development, as well as rate increases. Here's another look at utility tax, the water, sewer, storm, and garbage. Uh, all see stable percentage increases over time, kind of that stair step look. Uh, gas and electric saw a fairly uh significant increase, and both telephone and cable were small increases. Another major general fund revenue source is property tax, um, which increased by five percent compared to the same time period last year. The majority of property taxes collected in second and fourth quarters. So where does your money go? The majority of the expenses in the general fund are for public safety at forty-one percent. This is uh skewed somewhat um from years past because we have a big transfer out going to a water project, um, which is fifteen percent for well-free. Generally, uh, public safety is more around fifty percent. Here's another look uh by department and where your money goes. Total general fund expenditures were twenty percent of the biennial budget. Um, we're looking here again for that twenty-five percent or less. So we're doing well in that area as well. The city has uh special revenue funds for streets, park impact, criminal justice, and library. Uh, this graph displays the major revenue sources for each fund. Uh, the street fund and park impact fund each saw a decrease. The park impact fund uh has a direct correlation with the building activity slowing down. In addition to the building activity slowing, uh, two of our larger subdivisions have opted to build a park rather than pay into the park impact fee. Um, so this will most likely be adjusted in the mid-bio annual as we go forward. Um, also decreasing are the fuel taxes. Um, have been remaining flat and slightly declining for several periods. This is a picture of the special revenue funds. Um, expenditures, uh, the street fund saw an increase mostly due to some equipment purchases. Park impact remained flat. Criminal justice has seen an increase primarily due to increased operating costs and hiring hiring of an additional administrative professional, which utilizes the public's safety tax dollars. Uh, the library fund has seen a slight decrease due to the renegotiated contract with Mid-Columbia Libraries. Uh, this, next we'll look at our capital project funds. This slide outlines the um, five funds that we have. Um, two of them are winding down, and that would be the police facility and the cooperative way. So, next slide. Um, this is looking at those revenues. Um, again, the police fund, uh, three fifteen for the police facility and three twenty-one for a cooperative way uh project are winding down. Uh, also, you'll notice the extremely large budget for Fund Three-O-One, which is um usually primary source is REIT funds. Um, this is housing our state Route Two Twenty-Four project, uh, which has started, and we anticipate carrying this project into several years. So that number will be skewed for a while going forward. Uh, like I said, in the revenues for Fund Three-O-One and Three-O-Two are generally from real estate excise tax. Uh, we saw a fifty-four percent decrease in the collection compared to second quarter of last year compared to budget. The city is down about ten percent. Um, this form of revenue is has a direct correlation with sales of uh real property. Revenues for Fund Three Fifty-Five, which is our traffic impact fees, um, the city saw a significant decrease compared to last year uh last year, same time period, another volatile source of revenue. Um, compared to budget, um, we're down uh pretty significantly, but it's important to note on this one um that about fifty percent of our budget were waiting on one payment from City of Richland uh for the Badger Mountain Development Traffic Mitigation Fee, and I believe that came in off the top of my head, but I'm not sure. Uh, expenditures for capital project funds for the second quarter were not significant for the capital funds. Uh, they should pick up as project construction gets underway, in particular Fund Three Fifty-Five for bombing Range Road Keen Intersection and in Fund Three-O-One with the State Route Two Twenty-Four project. These last few slides take a closer look at our utility funds. Uh, for revenue, water collections increased two percent. There were just over five thousand, six hundred and fifty water utility accounts billed at the end of June. Sewer collections increased four percent, primarily due to an increase in new residences in the last year. Um, this is an image for irrigation revenue, which increased two percent in the second quarter. Stormwater collection revenue up one percent compared to the same period, second quarter of twenty-two. And the last utility revenue is solid waste collections was up twelve percent primarily due to rate increases and uh additional residential development. This final slide is a view of the utility expenditures for the most. These saw operating costs due to in uh higher cost of materials and labor and some equipment purchases, uh, particularly with the stormwater fund. So a lot of uh this evening's report wasn't necessarily positive, uh, not necessarily negative, but a little bit cautionary. The one area, again, I don't have a slide for, that has been insignificant in years past, is our interest revenue. Um, with inflation, the interest rates are increasing, the city is receiving more revenue than it has for the past several years. For twenty twenty-three, I didn't give you the biennial number. Uh, the city has budgeted a hundred and twenty-seven thousand across all funds. Uh, at the end of the second quarter, the city had received approximately eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand across all funds. That's about seven hundred and ten thousand over the amount budgeted. So that's where we're able to make up some of that um for those um areas that we're not doing so great in. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions of Aaron this evening? Councilmember Bloom's reaching for his card. Go ahead, sir.
Um, Aaron, it it Benton, um Benton R E A did not increase their utility rates this past quarter. So we had a significant increase in the utility bills, and I don't think this past year was that terrible as far as.
Um, you're talking the electric tax. I come in that graph combined is electric and gas, and I think the
Gas rates went up.
Gas is where we saw the most.
Mm-hmm. Um, but on this, on the electrical side, as people convert to solar, we we lose that tax revenue, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Um, just I, I have a uh next door countdown in Henderson, and everybody's complaining because they use all their credits up. And then August comes, they get hit with the four hundred dollar electric bill because all their solar credits from the winter is gone. So it's kind of a shock, but um, but there are a lot more use of solar down there because rates are so high. But, okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. Gwen, I just want to uh look at the criminal justice tax revenues once again. I think you mentioned we collected about two hundred and thirty thousand uh for this first uh part of the biennium. Is that roughly correct? Doesn't have to be.
Just double check.
While she's looking at that, I'll give you an ARPA update. American Re- uh Rescue Plan Act. That's what ARPA stands for. Alrighty, there you go. You bought your fifteen seconds, huh?
I would have to look. I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
Um, yeah, I'm taking it from the uh, the uh information that was part of our packet, but assuming it's roughly a quarter million dollars. Um, so that equates to roughly one million dollars for the biennium. Um, my point is this, the tax sunsets, uh, absent an approval from the voters, that tax sunsets in December of twenty-four. So if the tax is not approved by the citizens, we will have to find a way to um, address that one million dollar shortfall, uh, if we're going to maintain the same level of service. Is that correct?
Correct. So right now, that um, that tax funds two police officers, a sergeant, and um, and an administrative person, and that's not just the people, it's like all the stuff that goes with them. So it's the car, the maintenance, the uniform, everything.
Okay, I appreciate that. I I just wanted to clarify that, just, you know, for information purposes. Thank you.
And again, that's something that is negatively impacting all of the communities and counties if the public safety sales tax does not pass. I mean, we have four individuals. Kennewick probably has a dozen or more, maybe the chief could answer that when we get into, when you get into your staff reports. The uh municipalities and the counties would take a a real hit with boots on the ground and and with the what what we've got going on today in society, that would be a tragedy for everybody. So just to remember that when it comes time to vote, public safety is of utmost importance of not only City of West Richmond, but this city council as well. Anyone else? I see Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. Um, I'm wondering if we could get this uh slideshow emailed to us. It provides some slightly different information in different ways, and I I like how you put it in the slideshow, so I would like to digest it a little bit further if I could.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I'm also wondering, in regards to big picture, when we're looking at the change in revenue we've received and the change in expenditures we've received, it looks like we're still doing okay. Can you clarify a little bit?
Um, it's exactly like we're doing, we're maintaining, um, like we're not spending more than we have anticipated at this point, and nor are we collecting less. But the buckets that we're collecting revenue in are different. Um, like I talked about, the big one is the interest. So we are in a good uh cash position, so our cash is earning cash.
And as uh, as we look towards the mid-bio annual budget review, uh, from the staff perspective, I've asked staff to uh bring to us uh opportunities to uh save where we can, even though it's budgeted and it's there, doesn't mean that we have to spend it. So we're already making uh making plans to be conservative or make adjustments at the biennial budget. So as I reached out to all the senior staff, and I I phrased it uh to uh see where you can save some for the mason jar, because we may have to be burying it back in the backyard as we make adjustments for the mid-bio annual budget. So we're very well aware of the situation that we're in, but uh I feel confident that we'll be able to work through it. Keep in mind, uh, you know, COVID was really odd for everybody. I mean, the building permits were up, the economy was good, interest rates were down, ARPA money was floating around. I mean, it was a very odd time, and I'm talking to a lot of businesses during COVID, out of the last five years, the last two years when we were in COVID, were some of the highest revenue generations for small business, which is odd, and when you make projections on past, uh, we've got a new new non-COVID, and we have to make adjustments for this, as well as the economy taking a kind of a hit too, so. We're on top of it, council and citizens, taking in consideration the potentials. We're ready. Okay, any other question? All right, very good. Thank you. With that, that we'll move it on to the consent agenda this evening. And on the consent agenda, uh, there is Resolution Fifty-Five Twenty-Three authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Benton County regarding solid waste management. Resolution Fifty-Six Twenty-Three authorizing the mayor to sign a security and improvement agreement. Motion approving the final plat of the heights at Red Mountain Ranch Phase Five. Motion to authorize submission of ecology stormwater capacity grant. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to the Washington State Department of Transportation Participating Agreement for S R Two Twenty-Four Red Mountain Transportation Project. Motion to approve Co Tri Cities Regional Special Weapons and Tactics Interlocal Agreement. Motion to authorize approval of Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission and West Richland uh intergovernancy agent agreement. Ordinance Seventeen Twenty-Three amending West Richmond Municipal Code Seventeen dot thirteen dot O two O to allow event centers in R L forty zones as a conditional use. Ordinance Nineteen Twenty-Three amending Ordinance Seven Thirty-Seven dash thirteen Cascade Natural Gas Finance Agreement, franchise agreement, excuse me. Resolution Fifty-Seven Twenty-Three authorizing the mayor to execute the Washington Recreational Conservation Office Authorization Form for Deferred Maintenance Grant Application. And if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak to any of these items on the agenda this evening, you may come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And comments for three minutes, please?
You. I've I've done this route with, as a commissioner, they should not, they should not be allowed in the residential zones, and they really shouldn't be allowed in the, in any zone. Let somebody come in and do a zone chain if they need to be. Somewhere along the line, since I've been a commissioner, somebody decided this this should run with the land. You took away the opportunity by doing that to have citizens apply, let's say the dog kennel right now. So you allowed this to go to the next person. We don't get a say to correct and let you know how we feel and how it's been nice living next to a dog kennel. Furthermore, it took away your opportunity to correct a deficiency. It took that away. At a minimum, you need to do away with the C U Ps in the residential loans, and you should never have them run with the land. Somebody can comes in by permit to continue that business. It's income-producing kids. It's income-producing to one person, and it's a pain in the whatever to the us that have to live with these uses that you allow in a residential zone. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Evening. Dwayne Junkie, seven twenty-one South Forty-Eighth Avenue, West Richmond, Washington, of course. I was trying to find the property from our last meeting to where the uh event center was going to be located. I was able to, after a whole lot of digging, find the short plat, the property. It amazed me that all the way from Ranch Road, which is the asphalt kind of street, small, going to the gravel. It's almost a half a mile to get to the property. There's only a thirty-foot easement. Um, I assume you all know that. How how is this roadway going to go in there? Who pays for that roadway? Thirty feet wide is not wide enough for ambulance and two cars to go by. Is there more land going to be purchased? It seems to me there are a lot of questions. That property, as soon as you enter that property, it has a hundred foot by one hundred foot uh storage area for water, thousand square feet. Immediately, as soon as you get there, boom, I have it right here. I don't know if anyone's interested. But I'm asking, I asked before, where is the event center going? How's it going to be lit? How's it going to park? How do you get emergency vehicles in and out? And what about sound? I can hear the vacuums running up here at Yolks Area up by the church. Early in the morning, three-thirty in the morning. I can hear it from my house. I'm sorry. It echoes like an echo chamber. I was told one time, why don't you just move? I said, well, why? I have some beautiful land. It's natural. Um, it's, it's what we wanted. We want to have a little room to stretch. We got tired of the neighbors not taking care of their places. We can take care of ours. We have We have our little world. Thank you so much, but if you need a copy of this, please let me know at the end of the meeting.
Anyone else this evening? And Stephanie, uh, let's see, if we have anybody virtually, if you raise your virtual hand or star nine, if you're on a phone, we'll recognize you. I see no hands up virtually. Stephanie, do you?
Not.
Counsel, may I, uh, have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign?
Nay.
Carries, thank you, counsel. And with that, we will go ahead and roll to citizen public comment. Our first opportunity this evening for citizens to address the city council for items not on the agenda this evening. If you'd like to address the council for items not on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We have three minutes for conversa- or comments.
I am again, Peggy Penisco, nine and one bombing range road. Of course, I'm disappointed with how you did this tonight, but there's always the voting ahead. Listen, this is on the pot store. I'm going to ask each and every one of you who are going to vote on this issue that you listened to the tape that night. I want you to hear the, the, the passion and how these people that you voted, that we voted to represent us. Okay? I'm not asking you to read the minutes. It's not reflected in the minutes. But you seriously, I'm going to ask you, and I'll come back again, and I'm going to ask you if you did what I asked you to do. It's very simple. Go to the website, pull it up, listen to the people who spoke that night and listen to the passion that they have. If you really decide we need a pot shop, somebody made the suggestion to annex the, the donut hole out there. Took a lot of thinking on my part, but that we would end up with one, hopefully, pot shop. And if you annex it, guess what? You can set the conditions and zonings at the time you annex. That's when you have to do it for the county. It's set that, set what conditions you have for that. So to consider that. But, but please, listen to the people. Because if you just read notes and we've seen what happened tonight here is that I'm, I'm going to ask you to do that. I don't think it's asking too much. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Dan Ritchie, five oh eight Austin Drive. I agree with Ms. Penisco when it comes to the, uh, uh, pot shops. Second item, and that is we have the, you all know that I'm a member of the Bikes for Tykes, uh, board, as is Mr. Wally. And, uh, I want you guys to know that we have our annual golf tournament coming up on the sixteenth of September. And so I'll just throw a challenge down out there for you guys to come out, play in our golf tournament, help us raise funds for the Bikes for Tykes. We're going to be building sixteen hundred bikes in about three hours, uh, on the first of December. The golf tournament's on the sixteenth, so, so make sure you mark it down. And you can come out and you can watch the chief spank the pants off of the sheriff's department as they go out there and, and, and that's a challenge, chief. Oh, and so anyway, but I, I invite, I invite, uh, the police department. I invite all the citizens, I invite the council to come out and enjoy it. It's a great day and a very positive event. Thank you.
One else this evening? And if we have anybody virtually, star nine, or raise your virtual hand? I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not, no.
Very good. Then we'll go on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. We have none of those this evening, nor do we have any unfinished business. Or do we have any new business? So with that, this is our second opportunity for citizen public comment. So if you'd like to address counsel one more time, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Dwayne Junkie, seven two-one South Forty-Eighth Avenue, West Richland, Washington. I'm still living RL forty. I think that if you're going to put a business in as a taxpayer, you need to change the code. That needs a separate code. We went through that with the dog kennel, where he went, uh, he put in a public well over on bombing range with a hundred foot radius, but nothing can be built there. That took over two more neighbors. I don't know if he got permission for that. That's not my business. But decisions that are made here is for our future. Right now, I've taken a look at the paper this morning online. By the time I received it, it was late in the afternoon, hard copy. But we are looking at the homeless, going to be increasing. Homeless is going to be a big, big issue. You have a lot of young people losing jobs and not making house payments. And the first thing the bank's going to do is going to take it. And more and more people are moving out into the street, plus the funds are disappearing. They said here in Benton County, it's over fifteen hundred homeless that are recorded. Franklin's got like seventy-nine. We can triple that in a heartbeat. I worked in California. I saw a lot of that. And it was stuff that I didn't want to see. And it's a shame. So I'm just asking RL forty, please follow code requirements, what you set up. You, the council, everything, RL forty, low density, single family homes. If you're going to change it, change the number. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Anyone else this evening? Excuse me. And Stephanie, uh, anybody virtually? I see no hands up or star nines on phones?
I do not see any hands, no.
With that, we'll go ahead and move on to staff and council announcements, reports and comments. And, uh, I see senior staffs ready to roll over there, so we'll start with Chief Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Couple announcements for the police department, um, interviewing a part-time code enforcement on Monday. Um, hopefully find a good candidate for that. That still will take a little while to get it going because we do background similar to a law enforcement officer for our office. But I'm hoping to have one up and running maybe in October, the beginning of October-ish, depending on how the background investigation goes. Um, Officer Riojas is currently at the academy at the re- in the region. He'll be graduating on September fourteenth. He's doing really well, pretty proud of him. So we'll be going out to his graduation and supporting him and bringing him back to the, to the city where he belongs. Um, Mayor, just to address the earlier question, I looked up what we received at the Law and Justice Meeting, um, by the commissioners for the committee. And I'll just summarize, instead of going through each agency, I'll kind of summarize the, the package here. So we talked about full-time employees. So public safety sales tax continues to fund fifty-four local police officers and sheriff deputies across Benton County and the cities within it, as well as four deputy prosecutors, a superior court judge and supporting staff. So there it is, just kind of a scenario, just kind of laying it out. There's much more detail that they have, um, but for tonight's purposes, those are the numbers. So if you have any other questions, let me know, otherwise, thank you.
Good, thank you. I just wanted to get an idea of just what kind of negative impact could happen if the, the supporting funds weren't there for all of those people. Thank you, chief. Mr. Slade?
Just give council an update and the public that may be listening tomorrow, uh, at the bombing range, Keene Road intersection, they'll be paving the northwest northeast corner. So they'll be paving, going on some patching. So if you're going through that intersection tomorrow, there will be delays, uh, mainly because everybody's got to look and see what's going on as they go through. So, uh, so paving tomorrow. Uh, traffic then gets moved over to the new pavement and we start the final corner, which is the northwest corner. So the project's in its final stages. The, the, the big thing, uh, a lot of chatter on Facebook. Project's always been in of October. We're ahead of schedule. I'm not going to play my hand. Um, but staff did a great job procuring the electrical equipment, the signal cab, cabinets and stuff that typically get delayed. We have that in our possession or doing the program. And so, um, I'll just let you know, the project is on schedule and on budget. So again, they're doing a great job moving forward. Uh, again, if you can avoid the intersection tomorrow, uh, it'll help, uh, with things. And then, uh, later in the month, more information to come. But there will be a day that we close down the intersection, do the final lift of pavement. And so there will be a lot of plenty of notice going out to let people know it's one day. And, uh, we can deal with one day, um, to get that paving done and, uh, look forward to that project being done before the end of October, so.
Thank you, Russell. Yeah, your team's doing a great job, uh, with that project. We look forward to it being completed. Uh, they can open that shoe fly lane back up? I, I thought I'd throw that out there because that's a favorite one for everybody.
Yeah, so with this phase, when they're paving that corner, we'll be able to have the David Fettow, uh, free right turn lane back in there. So, and, and the Fred Brink, uh, so yeah, that, you know, out of the, all the questions we get, that's the question is, hey, can you put that back in? And unfortunately during this phase, we had to take it out, but it's going back in. So that will help, uh, westbound traffic on Keene that wants to turn north on Bomb Range. It'll help clear that out. But again, give us a couple of days if you can avoid the intersection, uh, till we get it back set up.
Counsel, any comments, questions, or comments, or comments, comments or reports? Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. Um, first, uh, I want to mention about the agenda. I honestly, and this is something that I will be held accountable for. I, my eyes for some reason skipped over this particular item. And by the time that you were reading it out, it was too late to pull it from the consent agenda, which is the reason that I voted no on the consent agenda. I am concerned that we are putting items that we had such, uh, controversy on at the previous meeting on the consent agenda. I feel as if we shouldn't put those on the consent agenda. The next time after, we had so many people that were concerned about it. Um, I would, like Ms. Penisco said, like to have heard more from council members on that because I'm not sure honestly that there was much of a difference between what it was before and what it is now in the packet. So at, at least for future, if we could make sure to not put things on the consent agenda that especially just at the last meeting had so much discussion on, that would be extremely helpful. Um, other than that, uh, I will just mention that right shortly after our last meeting, there was a Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting. Um, there was the TIP amendment was approved, so good to go on that. And, uh, there was just, uh, uh, reallocation of de-obligated transportation alternative program and carbon reduction program funds for Richland project that was done at the, uh, BF cog meeting. So that's all I got.
Counselmember Bloom?
Uh, yes, I, I wanted to comment. I, I was, when I saw the RL forty zone conditional use, I read the packet to see, and basically what was addressed in the discussion, the heated discussion was clearly addressed in the proposal. So I hope that we would have an unusually short city council meeting. Um, but I, I do appreciate the comments, but you know, it isn't that they went unnoticed of, of what was in the packet. Um, but recently I, I received an email, I believe other council members received the email relative to the lack of a public comment period at the planning commission meeting coming up on marijuana. Since they're being given additional information, it seems appropriate that the public should be able to provide comment to the planning commission. So I, I think we should be open to public comment when we can get public comment. Because unlike most city council meetings, we have people out there. We have public here. We have public online. Uh, we don't get public at most public meetings. So, uh, I think for an issue as, as important as the marijuana issue, I stress we should allow public comment at the planning commission meeting as well as city council. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about, um, I had the privilege of being on the Hamford site tour um, this last week, and it was just amazing. I've been out there before, but they, they've made so much progress out there. Um, and it means so much to our community, our whole region with the Hamford site and what the dollars that are brought to, to our community. And I just encourage, I know a lot of staff, um, have signed up to go. And I think that would be one of the best things we can do is get our staff out there too, to really see what's happening and how we're interacting with everything and everything that you do, the mayor with on the committees. Um, so I just want to say thanks for the opportunity. I learned a lot and the B reactor will be shutting down for a couple of years, but they'll be open, I think, through November. And so anybody that has opportunity to go out there and take that tour that hasn't, you should. It's, it's really, really wonderful to embrace our history. So thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, May. Uh, yeah, the, the reactor will be down, uh, for tours for two years. DOE is putting a new roof on it, uh, to preserve the history. Uh, and what we've done out there and continue to do is we, we phrased it cleanup to clean energy. Uh, so as we move forward to take care of the, uh, Manhattan project, not only at Hanford, but Lo- Los Alamos and Oak Ridge, uh, we'll also promote and, and actively campaign for, for clean energy projects. We have all of the, the talent. We have the resources. We have the industry. We have everything here for the next step in nuclear with new nuclear and small modular reactors. Something I'm very passionate of being the chair of Energy Communities Alliance and working with Hanford Communities as the, uh, administrative chair. Uh, my, my folks were out there from forty-six until in reactor shut down. I'm born and raised Tricidian. Uh, and just because I'm a downwinder doesn't mean that I have no hair. Because of that, I raised two daughters and that was the cause of that particular problem. But, uh, yeah, it's a significant accomplishments. And since we don't see it on a day-to-day basis, like Los, Los Alamos and Oak Ridge, which it's in their community, we forget just exactly the success that we've had so far. So a lot of work yet to do and it certainly, the Hanford bubble keeps us, keeps us flowing in the green stuff when, uh, when the mason jars need to get, uh, dug up in the backyard. So with that, I'll get off my ECA, Hanford Communities and try to clean up the clean energy and, uh, I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem Brink to, uh, give his report this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But I'll, I'll continue along the lines of what you'd mentioned because, uh, councilmember Hayes was out at the Hanford site. I joined her on that tour. It was made available to elected and appointed officials. Uh, there's another tour taking place in October. But the real benefit for me, I worked at P and L, as many of you know, for a number of years. We have staff members, or, uh, excuse me, council members here that work at P and L as well. But the impact of the Hanford site with the twelve thousand plus jobs that take place out there, the billions of dollars that are spent in the cleanup is, is of such tremendous impact to our communities here, not just West Richland, but obviously Richland, Kennewick, Pasco and the outlying areas. We had other, uh, local officials. We had a county commissioner out there as well. Uh, we had a representative from a congressional office. So it was a good mix of individuals, but, uh, spending that eight hours was definitely worth it uh, in terms of getting a good ideas to what the impact is for the work that DOE is doing on our communities. Um, second note is just this, uh, believe it or not, it's time to start gearing up for a state legislative session. The legislature reconvenes in January. The Association of Washington Cities is, uh, putting together their legislative priorities agenda. That is the, uh, uh, items that the legislature will consider, which AWC will either support or take no position or actively oppose. Uh, some of the things that the AWC advocated last year, along with tonight's theme of law enforcement, is, uh, the Blake decision, getting, uh, changes made to that, uh, which, uh, obviously when the decision was first made by the courts, created havoc as far as drug enforcement, uh, uh, concerns. Um, police pursuits. ABC strongly supported revisions to the state pursuit law, which our legislator, legislation tore apart the year before. So giving police some authority to pursue, uh, active criminals engaged in serious criminal conduct. So, uh, if you have suggestions, if you hear of what the legislature is considering taking up, I'm one of your representatives there. I would love to hear from you, uh, since I sit on the board of directors there. Uh, we, the board of directors actually have final decision as to what those priorities are. So if I can be of service to you. My head, Mr. Mayor.
Brink, and I want to thank you for chairing the meeting that I was not able to attend as I was in Los Alamos, uh, for a peer exchange with Energy Communities Alliance, where I had the opportunity to, to watch the Offenheimer, uh, movie. Uh, and that was, uh, very, very well done. Uh, and that was a very, very well done. Three hours is a long time. It was a bladder check for me. That was, uh, I was wondering why the outhouses were lined up outside the theater, and then after the movie was concluded, I understood exactly why that was. But uh, that was, it was a great movie and it told a lot of the history. Uh, so I would, I would suggest if you have the opportunity uh, to watch that movie. There's no pause button, so remember, it's, it's. Long, long show. And I, I, you're gonna, you're gonna key off on that one?
Um, you know, all the discussion of, of out at Hanford and, and the history out there, Oppenheimer. Um, you know, I've, I've worked out there forty years and, you know, the, the thing that, that. Uh, the, my time at the plutonium finishing plant, there was a stairway up to the. Control room which oversaw the button line. This is where the plutonium was made. And what came to my mind was nineteen sixty-four, I think it was sixty-four, maybe sixty-two. President? Two.
I was there.
Um. President Kennedy walked those stairs. And so every time I walked up those stairs, I realized how many presidents before me had walked those stairs. Because that was the most important part of our Cold War history. And you know, I helped tear it down. I wrote its obituary. So, but you know, there's so many things out there. The thing that you don't get to see on the tour is actually go in the canyons. The canyons, I mean, as a worker out there, when you look down that canyon, you realize this was thrown together. In a little over a year. And it worked. That's the amazing thing. But as you look at that long concrete building out there, the canyons. It's, it's more impressive on the inside, so, thank you.
History, big part of it. Before we conclude, I'm gonna go back to Chief Grego. One more thing.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity to talk again. Hey, just wanted to announce tonight, um, I know a lot of you already know, I was, I was given a nomination to go to the FBI National Academy. Earlier this year. Um, I have processed going into it. I have my classes picked out. I leave, I fly out on the twenty-third of this month. And Commander Jared Kelly is gonna be acting chief in my place while I'm gone. I'll be gone until December seventh, probably fly back the eighth because graduation's on the seventh. Uh, but I just wanted to make that announcement, let everybody know. He'll be in charge and I have a plan with the mayor and I'll be staying in touch with him weekly. On decision makings and things that we need to talk, talk about as a team, so I won't be completely out of the loop. But anyway, there you go. That's the announcement.
And then uh, one question, uh, who's polar gonna hang out with when you're gone? The dog is gonna have anxiety.
I think I gave Commander Kelly the order, he can open my door so he can hang out in my office if he wants. That's pretty much where he'll hang out, so.
Commander Kelly, please check for surprises before the chief gets back, if that's the case. All right, with that, thank you very much for this evening, council and citizens, and I'll adjourn this meeting at six fifty-three.